The light's on. The whole time, because you're lazy. Come on, it will be on the whole time. It cuts out.
This October meeting of the Collins Wood Board of Education is called to order. This meeting has been appropriately advertised as required by law. Roll call, please. Dr. Becker?
Present.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Caden?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Wood?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Cecilia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the chosen republic and its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being as there's no executive session, we'll move right to item three on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter committee of the whole? A second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our first item will be a presentation by Dr. Oswald on the November 5th ballot initiative, followed by an update on board goals.
So the presentation this evening, if you have been up to any of the presentations we've done about the community, it's going to be very similar. A couple slight changes we've made, but primarily the same information that we've been doing. So Collins Wood Strong is the name of the initiative. November 5th is the November 5th ballot, which is the regular election ballot, is to enhance our social, emotional, mental health services around the college and schools, focusing primarily on the elementary school. We'll start out what we ask it, so on November 5th, during the general election. That's important because during the general election, we're putting this question on the ballot offensively. Ballot's already being designed and we're already having elections, so there's no loss to ask the community. Our core, so on November 5th during the general election, the Collins Wood Board of Education will ask that we provide an additional $225,000 in total for the entire community. We have been funding to allow the district to develop and operate comprehensive social, emotional, and mental health services program for our students and families. This equates to about $48 per year for the average Collins Wood Hall. So all new slides will be coming up here. So what we're proposing is a mirror on the social and emotional side, what we're already doing on the academic side. So currently on the academic side, we offer a multi-tiered system of supports, in that case it's academic supports. And right now that is we provide high-quality instruction and intervention matched to student needs. So MTSS academic, multi-tiered system of supports on the academic side really looks like three tiers. They're going to see those three tiers in a second. And we provide increasingly intensive interventions as we move off those tiers. That's what we're asking, that's how we're building the system and designing this initiative. These next two slides, as we came out, the National Association of School Psychologists. So school community collaboration is critical to providing a full containment room on mental health services. This is important because meeting that full containment of mental health of student needs in the area of mental health is dependent upon collaboration between the schools and the community mental health service providers. Typically, community providers offer supplementary or intensive services that go beyond what a school is capable of doing. That is not a college that's capable of doing, that is primarily about any school's capable of doing. School counselors are not therapists, and they don't provide the level of intensive services that some of our students and also some of our families need. An MTSS system approach facilitates effective collaboration while ensuring that services provided in school are appropriated in a learning context. Understand that when we provide services, whether it's part of the student's IT, part of Ohio 4 plan, or any type of any other management that is assigned to the student, our focus is to make sure that the student can be successful during the school day. At 2:35 or 3 o'clock when the school day ends, that does not become our focus. Our focus is what do we need to do so that the student can be successful during the school day. That student may then go home to an entirely other grade of issues and challenges that might be the community set and the family set. That is not the focus of what we provide in school. So our focus right now, the services we provide are services that are necessary for the student to be successful in school. By inviting an outside agency, a community agency in, we are actually expanding those services to allow the student to be more universally successful and supported beyond the school day. The issue that may impact their lives beyond school itself. This is not particularly curious, but this is a picture of a multi-tiered system of support through National Association of School Psychologists, not encouraging this in terms of that, but you will see by looking at the next slide that this at the bottom, here at the bottom, which is the larger section of the triangle, is really a really diverse service that is provided to students. So in this right now, we have a second step that we offer in some of our schools, we offer a program of psychophiles, we also that we typically offer the lead program, law enforcement against drugs. Law enforcement against drugs is much less about drugs and much more about how the policy decision making, who's going to be those that are so very much aligned with our certain mental health programs and your case of work rate. And I do look at first what we're making that we have a little on. Once, we know, this is on the next slide, we know, based on research, and this is kind of even animal research, that those universal supports are mainly without the, the micro services. So we go and use the Zen number, it will be enough students that are students who need support beyond, so after the high school class, and then if tier two and tier three come in, this is a little bit easier to see, this is a little bit easier to see in colors. The bottom, what's behind there, we need to check. Through that 80% we offer the services that I just talked about, those are the things we offer today, and you will continue to offer. In the middle section, we're trying to fast up, 50% of our students need additional support beyond regular classes, I mean, early classes. May get small group counseling, they may get, you know, like, sort of, facilities becoming more abundant for, 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 who offer those with it, and we have many schools already, so it's quite obvious. Despite the fact we offer a lot of the, the universal support without options here, and other additional supports, we are still going to have that 5% of the patient initially to meet support here. So that's the point that we work from, the number of people that are not being active on the, on the, on the, on the, to certify 80% of the, of the, of the, of the program. Everybody, there will be students who need additional support that year. So again, we'll need to one of those tiers. Interior one, the bottom triangle, the services, those are for all students, we need some of the, the, so we have whole class of skill, all self-respect, need a particular program, and you're just doing, you're doing some mindfulness practices about all around many schools with you. We will add two this year, right, and so anything, and you're going to have a screening procedures. We will give you a head up, of course, you can do our experience in some counties that you may not be able to pick up all on, and then, and then, apparently, there are workshops that once you go off of, you're not continuing or having workshops, you're going to be able to do that, they'll also, they'll, 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 they'll. And the Eric staff has been involved, early, 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 early practices from district, early practices of clinical clinical and mindfulness practices required. The clinical practices, they, they, that, 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 that. Early practices, the, 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 the. Mindfulness practices, you, 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 you. That's tier one. Tier two, tier two, you know, the, 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 those are the types of, 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 of,[1329.54] Uh, partners, we met now with three or four different potential partners, just following that comment of being, being handled on the road, just following a, uh, like, uh, ten servers, eight to five. We get a fine for any, obviously, we can get involved with this, uh, team, we can, uh, very excited, uh, maybe, uh, uh, so, maybe, if approach is not on any, uh, any level that we are aware of, uh, we are aware that there is a, uh, financial program that's probably, uh, that happens, um, in state, uh, but right now, uh, we're, uh, we're looking for, uh, anybody that's involved with, uh, and we really do want to, uh, gain any, uh, resources, uh, getting that help that we need, uh, uh... Uh, but yeah, folks, uh, the first line, that's, uh, yeah, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. As a yodder, quite, uh, one, two, two, uh, uh, four, three, uh, four, uh, month, very happy to say, um, oh, he's a summer, uh, twenty-nine, uh, very happy. Uh, so, frequently, I've heard, uh, that we made our way around that, uh, we saw, uh, 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 if this is an agent of the services that are already, uh, 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 services department, uh, you have to, uh, I think, that our council is in a position, uh, and this will not be a, uh, right. Uh, we have a lot of communities that need assistance, uh, for, that are not, not called back, uh, 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 and, uh, and, uh, so, if this is an agent, by all, cannot be, uh, uh, I, uh, I, uh... How many do you guys, how would we access these services? Uh, anyone's specific service you've got here, uh, we can do much of it now, uh, we often get, uh, 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 so, how do we ensure that, uh, the twenty-four twenty students can very often be, uh, uh, now, uh, and, uh, if we provide, right now, we provide to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, uh, and, uh, and, uh, uh, calculated, uh, those, those, uh, uh, have needed, that is kind of same as saying, that is partly where our system is. There's not a whole lot more we can do beyond that, uh, except, essentially, we make it on the line, uh, uh, this is a balance, uh, uh, on that, you know, uh, all, uh, of course, we get, uh, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, uh, and, 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 uh, and,[550.12]
...right now in restorative practices and that will spill into the elementary schools next year. And then next year, we're also planning for, depending on what group you talk to, something under the umbrella of cultural responsive practices, cultural responsive pedagogy, equity literacy. There tends to be a number of titles for that. So that's something that we're already planning for next year. And the Equity Committee, the Board Equity Committee, will continue to meet after school hours in the evenings once a month. And that group is also tackling several issues. This mental health initiative was actually the first issue that was identified by that group. The next one, I believe, will be kind of the equity among elementary schools and how we tackle that and the best way to go about tackling that. So that's the equity goal, priority goal, pretty good. And the third one is the facilities plan. So right now, we are conducting a comprehensive facilities audit. We have completed our own walkthrough of all of the buildings. Mrs. Coleman and Mr. Hurd went through last week with maps and mapped out every single classroom space and how it's being used. A couple of board members and I went through today, so we saw firsthand how each of those spaces is being used. I think that we have some very creative use of space in our elementary schools. And I say creative not in the best sense. Sometimes we are stretching what we should be doing. We are stretching the ideal, let's say that. But we're using the space that we're given and I think we're meeting the needs of the kids, of the students that we have to serve or that we are charged with service serving. The enrollment study was awarded last month, September, was awarded at the September Board Meeting, so that kickoff has happened. We should, I'm going to say 90 days, probably shorter than 90 days now, get results back from our enrollment study. Our enrollment study will show us, should give us a very clear picture and very clear indication over the next five years of where our enrollment will go. So they look at housing, like sales in town, they look at births in town, there, I mean, there's all kinds of data that goes into that study, as well as our current school facilities, what we have currently, the space, how we use it, and what we may need to do in the future, which could be anything from adding additional space to nothing. I mean, it may be that we don't need additional space. That's the purpose of the demographic study and the enrollment study. So that's well underway. Right now, at the September retreat, the board held a September retreat, and we really discussed some priorities of how, you know, if we get squeezed for classroom space, what's going to go? You know, we can only use one, just like everybody can only spend every dollar once, we can only use every space once. We can't have six or seven different things going on in a classroom at the same time. So there are times where it's a little bit of a push-pull and we have to prioritize. So the board certainly came up with and directed the administration about where those priorities should be. And I think that we'll learn a lot more once the enrollment study comes in. And those are the three board priorities for the year and goals associated with those priorities.
Thank you, Dr. Oswald. Are there any questions from board members on the November 5th ballot initiative or both board goals or other issues of concern for committee of the whole? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to exit committee of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Section four on our agenda is a presentation from Mr. Yamamoto on the student safety report.
You don't eat that, Dave.
Thank you very much. Section five on our agenda are upcoming dates. If you glance at it, you'll see there's the elementary Halloween dismissal times, our last Collingswood Strong presentation before the vote on 11/4, and upcoming activities and school closings for November. Moving on to item six on our agenda, it's routine board business and the purpose is to approve the minutes of the September 2019 regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve that? All in favor? And section seven on the agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. Please stand and state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the evening. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. And I would ask any members of the public speaking to please use the microphone. If there's no comments from the public, we will move on to item eight on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
General comment, any comments on agenda?
Yes, this last one was for agenda items and later in the evening, there'll be an opportunity for general.
So you have in front of you, under 8.01, the enrollment report. So September 2019, should I have the slides?
Yes, you should have them.
Sorry. September, yeah, in stereo, just so you need. September 2019, we have 2,236 students in the district. That is an increase of about, of exactly 101 students over last year. We have certainly more preschool students this year than we did at this time last year, so that accounts for a large number of those, that increase. We have the safety, school safety drill reports from all seven of our schools, suspension reports from all seven of our schools. And then under 805, you will see a whole host of policy, policies listed there under the first reading. All of them except one are revisions to existing policy to align with code. The new policy is, the top one there, 1642, is the earned sick leave law. So right now, if we have, what's the word, the constant employment or...
Constantly.
Constantly employed folks in the district. So it's a teacher, an instructional assistant, a custodian, a secretary, anybody who's constantly employed, they are covered under a different law and they get a certain number of sick days. When we have other staff members who are not constantly employed, which would typically be our substitute teachers, they are covered under their earned sick leave law. So now, as a, as any other employee that's not covered under 18A, Title 18A, is, comes into the district, for every 30 hours they work, they earn one hour of sick leave. So once they have worked in our schools and served as a substitute in our schools for a certain number of days, they are actually eligible for a sick day themselves. So we could have a substitute log in in the morning, pick up a substitute position, and then call out sick themselves. So now we have two subs for the same job. So I guess that's the newest effort to lower taxes, I'm not sure, but it's not going to work. So that is, we are working through that right now. It is a challenge to keep track of all those because we have a lot of folks who work as substitutes in the district and they're not here every day. So keeping track has proven to be quite a challenge, but we're on it and they will eventually earn sick time from their substitute teaching position.
General question just about that, does that also include, for instance, part-time coaches? Our coaches are not a person that's already employed constantly by district.
So our coaches are, if I'm a coach and I'm sick today, the coaches earn a stipend. So if I'm a coach and I'm sick today, my stipend is $2,000, and I'm sick today, at the end of my season, I still get $2,000. So it's not really, we don't, there's no, I use the word docking, they don't lose any money by being sick today. And most of our coaches are our own staff members, so they're already wrapped into our 18A rules. Yeah, so those, those little intricacies, I think, will play out over time. And the sick leave law, we have heard probably from a dozen different law firms who have said that will eventually go to court, somebody will sue on that, and that's when the decision will really be made, and that's fine, we just don't want it to be on our dime, so someone else will fight that battle for us. And that's it.
Any board member questions or comments on the superintendent's report? And then section nine on our agenda is the opportunity to hear from our students.
In regards to academics, on Wednesday, October 16th, sophomores and juniors took the PSATs in preparation for future standardized testing. Then on Thursday, October 24th, the annual college fair took place with over 80 colleges/technical schools being present. And tonight, the financial aid night is occurring at the library over at the high school from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock. Finally, the counseling office is sponsoring a trip to the Malcolm Bernard HBCU College Fair on November 19th, where there will be representatives from over 30 historically black colleges and universities.
For athletics, girls soccer had a away playoff game at Haddon Heights today, and they unfortunately lost in overtime, 1-0. Field hockey had a third round away playoff game at St. Minsin, and we won 2-1. We also defeated Maple Shade in the second round, that was our home game, we won 3-1. At the conference championships for cross country, 17 out of our 24 runners ran personal best times, and their sectionals will be coming up on November 9th. The football team has their final game coming up this Friday against Sterling. And finally, Ellen Pope and Ayanna Jones were named to the conference All-Star team for girls volleyball.
For extracurricular activities, the CHS Spirit Week took place this month, which concluded with a pep rally, and the high school homecoming dance will take place November 6th. The Collingswood Panther marching band finished off a successful season of competition with three championship performances. The band traveled to Toms River on October 19th and finished third in the New Jersey State Championships. On October 20th, they competed in the South Jersey Region Championships in Franklinville, finishing third and winning the award for the best color guard. On October 26th, the band traveled to the Atlantic Coast Championship in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, where they finished third out of 25 bands with a score of 92.82, earning a promotion to the highest competitive class for 2020. And senior drum major Noah McAllister was the winner of the Tournament of the Band Scholarship.
Okay, thank you all very much for speaking. Mrs. Caden and I attended the New Jersey School Boards workshop, and one of the things that they reminded us of was that all the formalities that school boards go through, it's really all about the students. And although we keep that in mind, having you three here representing reminds us that physically. So thank you very much, and we appreciate the time you take out to do that. So you're free to go. Okay, section 10 on our agenda is our report from our Business Administrator Board Secretary, Mrs. Coleman.
All right, this evening, I have your monthly transfers for the month of September, as well as your Board Secretary Treasurers Report and Cash Reports, Student Activity Report, Food Service Financial Statement, your October purchase orders, as well as the list of warrants to be paid, all for your approval.
Other questions or comments on those items? And we'll move on to, we need approval for that? We'll move on to section 11, our report from Dr. Becker, Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you. On behalf of the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee, I present the following items, night for action by the board. Our committee description is the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. I draw your attention to items number 11.02 to 11.09. This is the approval of monthly routine financial reports that the districts require to prepare and submit. These include the approval of all transfers, certification of budget over expenditures, Board Secretary Treasury Reports, Student Activities Report, Food Service Financial Statement, Purchase Orders, and Warrants, all the reports just presented by Mrs. Coleman. Item number 11.10 is approval of the submission of the Sustainable Jersey for Schools Small Grant Application. This will be for district-wide schools. Item number 11.11 is approval of the Camden County Educational Services Commission for idea service contract to provide a school council for Good Shepherd for 2019-20 school year. The district is required to receive these funds and disperse them to Good Shepherd. 11.12, approval of a contract with Oxford Consulting Services to provide home instruction services for a student. 11.13, approval of a contract with Varchity Tutors LLC to provide home instruction service regarding upper-level math and science on a as-needed basis. 11.14, approval of Biata Home Healthcare Incorporated as provider of one-on-one nursing services for a special education student for the 2019-20 school year. 11.15 is approval of the contract with Southern New Jersey Perinatal Cooperative to provide nursing services to non-public school services for the 2019 school year as required by the state of New Jersey. 11.16, approval of the resolution to amend the Long Ranch Facilities Plan to include the use of space at the First United Methodist Church in Collinswood. 11.17 is approval of a shared services contract with the Oakland District for project management services in 2019-20. 11.18 is approval of a revised lease with the Oakland Public School District for the use of space. 11.19 is the approval of donation of a portable basketball hoop. 11.20 to 2021 is approval of musical instrument donations. 11.22 is approval of the request from the Collinswood Recreation Program for the use of facilities. Tonight, I'm requesting approval of items 11.01 to 11.22.
Are there questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Dr. Becker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Yes, except for 11.11, conflict of interest. Okay, our next item on the agenda will be presented by our Curriculum Committee Chairperson, Mrs. Caden.
Okay, tonight, asking for approval for items 12.02, which is elementary school field trips. Currently, we just have Tatum's kindergarten going to Johnson's Farm later, or in the beginning of November. 12.03 are middle school field trips. It's a joint field trip between the middle school and the high school orchestra, going to Rowan University, actually in the spring. Mr. DeSantis is just really on top of his submissions. 12.04 are some interesting high school field trips. The child development class is going to the preschool to help with, Oakland preschool to help with the Halloween activities for the day. The HBCU College Fair that Senna talked about, and then Mr. King's 10th and 12th grade art classes are going to the Penn Archaeological Museum. 12.05 is the approval of an overnight field trip for the Model UN students to participate in the Model UN Conference in New Brunswick, New Jersey from December 5th through December 8th. 12.06 is an out-of-district placement for a student beginning on October 21st. 12.07 are the out-of-district home instruction placements for the middle school, and 12.08 are the out-of-district home instruction placements for the high school. 12.09 is the approval of some revisions to the Collinswood High School chapter of the National Honor Society application. They just kind of streamlined it and added a rubric to go along with the essay that they have to write and things like that, based on recommendations from the National, National Honor Society. 12.10 is, are some revisions to the Option 2 Packet application. 12.11 is the approval of Google and Screencast-O-Matic to work with Mr. Walsh in the high school to record his classroom instruction on November 12th. Only students with parent-signed media release forms, unique to this opportunity, will appear in the recording. 12.12 is the approval of the submission of the 2020-2021 preschool plan and associated budget to the New Jersey Department of Ed. And that is it for tonight, so looking for approval of items 12.01 to 12.12.
Wait, are there motions for those items? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Dr. Becker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes, except for Rowan University.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes, except for the double asterisk for Abstain.
Gotcha. Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except for the double asterisk for Abstain.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Yes. Section 13 on our agenda will be presented by the Chairperson for our Personnel Committee, Mr. Wall.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Tonight, we are seeking approval for the following items. 13.02 is a resignation of a staff member. 13.03 is approval for paid medical leave of absence or maternity leave. 13.04 is an extended unpaid leave for an employee. 13.05 and 13.06 are part-time preschool teacher hires. 13.07 is a revised contract for a teacher. 13.08 is a permanent substitute hire. 13.09 is playground assistant, elementary lunchtime aides. 13.10 is the elementary non-athletic stipends for staff members. 13.11 is the high school, that one's elementary, this one's high school. 13.12 is the middle school winter athletic stipends, as listed below. 13.13 is the high school winter athletic stipends, as listed below. 13.14 is the athletic event staff rates as needed for supervision of events. 13.15 is the high school accountability and support program, student tutors, to work as student tutors for the 19-20 school year. 13.16 is an occupational therapist observation, an occupational therapy student coming in to do some observation hours with, under the direction of Ms. Bros, for 20 hours in October through December. 13.17 is approval for a volunteer. 13.18 is the approval for our substitutes and tutors, as listed below. And 13.19 is the travel expense form for professional development opportunities for staff members. So tonight, we're seeking approval for 13.01 through 13.19.
Are there motions for those items? Questions or comments from board members?
Under 13.16, the observation, are they students, students just being in the office setting, or is she observing Ms. Bros while she is there?
She'll be observing the therapy. So it'd be like a student teacher coming in and observing a classroom, she would be observing her.
And is this something that the parents have decided?
The parents have permission for that.
Any other concerns from board members? Roll call, please. Dr. Becker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, except for 13.16.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes, except for the double asterisk for Abstain.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except for the double asterisk for Abstain.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Yes. Dr. Oswald, will you please present section 14 on our agenda, Policy in Miscellaneous?
14.01, oops. 14.01 is the HIB report from the previous month. 14.02 are the standing orders for our nurses from our school doctor governing the treatment of our students in case of emergencies. 14.03 is our nursing services plan that we submit to the Department of Ed each year. And that's it, 14.01 to 14.03.
Thank you. Are there motions to approve those items?
So moved.
Questions and comments from board members? Roll call, please. Dr. Becker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Yes. Section 15 on our agenda is our second opportunity for public participation. Please stand at the microphone and state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. And again, the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. Members from the public are welcome to speak.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Dill. I live at 27 East Browning Road in Collinswood, across from Mark Newby. And I'm here tonight from the CEAG to address the issues of libraries particularly in Collinswood schools, especially the elementary schools, and most especially Tatum. And I certainly was struck by Dr. Oswald's mention that the equity, you know, among our schools is a very, very big issue with our committee people, and as well it should be. So I wanted to start off by saying that my three kids, who are now late 30s, early 40s, all went to Tatum, and my grandson now attends Tatum in the fourth grade. So of course, it's a very, very special school to all of us. And I was very shocked to learn that his school no longer has its own library space. Now, when my kids were there, that was a very special time for them, and they had a wonderful librarian, Mrs. Strabel. Maybe some of you, well, I'm looking for the older faces, some of you may remember her. Her memory is still very dear to them and to me. And that was a very special time because she could give them individual attention and help them select something that really suited their needs and challenged them. And she helped also guide them in knowing how to research or to judge material, which I think we can all agree, we desperately need that ability in our society. So I wanted to say thank you, because the school has made some concerted efforts over the past year to tackle the lack of library media programming in our elementary schools. And we really do thank you for that. Students, however, still do not have direct access to a library media specialist, though until they are already teenagers starting middle school. And I think, you know, the absence of that at the elementary level is something that is really going to handicap them, and we are concerned about that very much. And especially this ability to critically evaluate media, I think, we're losing our ability to judge if we don't know how to do that. So that was shocking, the dismantling of the library at Tatum. I've talked about it, I can't urge you enough to come to some equitable plan there so that those children do have access to books and to someone who can guide them. Now, they are still not coming home with books. It's two months into the school year, there has been an attempt to provide some books outside the office, but it's just not, they're not taking them home, it's not the same kind of oversight to what they're selecting. So research showing the effect of a robust library media program on students, especially our most disenfranchised and struggling students, is overwhelming. Test scores improve, reading improves, and students develop a meaningful understanding of research. Yet still, Collinswood directs money away from these programs to fund other endeavors. Many local parents are concerned by the lack of digital safety and media literacy instruction taught by a professional in the elementary schools, in the elementary schools. This cannot be left to the teachers to do when there is time. This needs to be high priority and taught... This needs to be high priority and taught by the one person in a school district who is certified with training to provide this instruction. Our district has made priority to budget for things they consider important, such as road paving and broadcasting programs. Libraries, too, need to be important to our board and made priority, because they are priority to our families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Did you have any questions or anything you want me to take back? Thank you for your time. Thanks.
It's always nice to come to a meeting where there are a group of adults who are really concerned about children's education, and so I just want to applaud you all. I am Dr. Derek Campbell. My address is 213 Society Hill Boulevard, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, 08003. I am a promoter of racial harmony, and as a former educator and subject matter expert, I have the perfect program that will help you meet your yearly professional development training requirements, which are found under Managing for Equality and Equity in Education, and you can find that in the administrative code NJAC 6A7-1.6. According to the New Jersey Department of Education, in 2018, white students outperformed black and Hispanic students in the areas of language arts and mathematics. One of the primary factors that contributes to the academic achievement gap are the cultural differences between teachers and students. If you implement my program, you will be proactive in resolving the student achievement gap and promote positive racial teacher-student classroom relationships. I am available to meet with you either individually or collectively to provide you additional information regarding my program, and I'd also like to leave you with an introductory letter. Is that okay?
11. 11.
Any questions or comments for me? Okay, thank you.
My name is Julie Snyder, 11-819 McGill, right across from Sharp School, and I also come advocating about libraries in our elementary schools. I'm the Vice President of our PTA this year, and it's our job to maintain a library, to decide what books to purchase, how to set up those books appropriately in the library, and I don't think we have anyone that's really qualified to do that. And I think the way the libraries are set up right now, it is set up for failure, in that we can't make them the flourishing spaces that they should be, because we don't have someone who is able to help us with that. I also think that libraries make a really big difference for the kids that are most vulnerable in our schools, and they need access to books that reflect who they are and a librarian or an expert in that knows what books are up and coming, there's a lot, actually, but we don't have anyone that is privy to that information. A librarian is also another adult in the school that's a lover of knowledge, a lover of information, and I also remember very, you know, I have great memories of library time and the librarian in my school as well, shaping me into the reader that I am. Recently, there's also Elijah Cummings passed away, a civil rights activist and a politician who talked directly about, for him personally, the change that the library had for him in his life. I do think the definition maybe of what how Collinswood is looking at a librarian might also be part of the problem, you know, librarians are media specialists, they teach us how to interact with information and knowledge. So I'm concerned that my child is in 3rd grader, you know, she'll be writing papers, and so to have, again, an expert teaching her how to use websites, use databases that are special to evaluate websites for what is, what are reputable websites and what is fake news, I think is a huge issue right now. And there should be someone in the district helping our students negotiate that before they get into middle school. We need to scaffold them to be able to research. I think teachers can do a great job, but I think they need more support, and a media specialist would be that person. I was very disappointed when I saw that the district was hiring a librarian, and that person is not working in Collinswood in a library position whatsoever. And for me, it shows the value that Collinswood places on library science, on librarians, and I would like to understand that more, to be honest, because I think it sends a message that the value's not there, and I think, I hope the value is there, so I'd like to learn more about that, on how those decisions are made. I understand space is an issue, I understand money is an issue, I understand classroom libraries are actually amazing, I think the teachers do a really good job of that, but I think we need more, I think our kids deserve more, and when we talk about equity, that's a space that can really make a difference, and I'm disappointed that the district isn't doing more for that. So if anything, you know, I'd like at least communication about how those decisions are being made, and kind of what is the long-term plan, especially if space becomes an issue. So I appreciate what you do, this is something I care about and I wanted to share. Thank you.
You can be addressed there.
Quick question, 11-13 Boston Tutors and 11-12, how soon would it be implemented?
After tonight, the contracts will be signed with them, so I don't know what date it'll be implemented, but they'll be available after tonight.
So they'll be available right away? All right, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm William Reedoff, 130 New Jersey Avenue. So there's a video that's been going around on social media for the Collinswood Nationalists Party, and I've heard that several students were behind that. Does the board know anything about this, or is there any kind of investigation being done? No? Okay. I saw it on In the Wood, and the video's on YouTube. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, and as always, specific questions can be addressed to the board through our board email. All right, seeing no more public comment, I move to section 16 and ask the board if there's a motion to adjourn. All in favor?